Okay, it's 6 o'clock and I will call the June 24th, not April 30th, but June 25th being a virtual meeting of the Bassdrop Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Viviana, will you please call the road?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Debbie Moore.
Present.
Cynthia Meyer.
Present.
Cheryl Lee.
Present.
Greg Schick.
Present.
Ishmael Harris.
Present.
Pablo Serna.
Present.
And I heard from, excellent, I heard from Glenn Johnson that he wouldn't attend and so I'm going to call Matt Lassen. He might or might not, I'm not sure. Matt Lassen?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
We got you. Glenn may join later. Judge will pick him up. I acknowledge that he's here. The next item on the agenda is citizen comments. Have we received any comments before the meeting started?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, and if anybody's watching and they wish to make a comment on anything on the agenda, they would be sent an email to plan@cityofbassdrop.org and Viviana would let me know that we've received comment and we will recognize you as soon as possible. So, said that, we will move on to Item 3. Item 3, individual consideration. Item 3A, action to approve meeting minutes in the April 30, 2020 meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission. Has everyone had an opportunity to read them?
Yes.
Are there any additions correct? Go ahead. You made a motion?
Sure.
Greg, you made a motion to approve?
I did.
And Matt seconded? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Meeting minute approved unanimously. Item 3B, consider action to make a recommendation for the amendment to the Bassdrop Grove Residential Plan Development District Ordinance 2019-59 with the residential base used to adjust standards for residential development on 67.111 acres out of the Nancy Blakey survey, abstract 98, located south of Agnes Street and east of Highway 304, an area currently zoned Plan Development District within the city limits of Bassdrop and forward to the July 14, 2020 meeting. So, who's going to take this one?
I will. This is Allison Land, planner. All right, so this is a Plan Development District Amendment. This Plan Development District was adopted on the same night as the B-3 code, I believe, or right about the same time. It is located across 304 from Hunter's Crossing, south of the new Seton Hospital and Agnes Street. It's the interior parcels that you see highlighted in red. The request is for changes that, just to the development standards, they are not changing the lot counts, they're not changing the allotment of uses within the property, you know, just some of the residential lot standards. The future land use map calls us professional services and it is in the Meadows character district.
Now, that's why there was notification, but there's no need for a formal public hearing, correct? There was, I got a call or two for about the notices that were posted, but we don't need to have a formal public hearing to do this?
Ooh, that is an excellent question. It is a zoning amendment. Let me double check the notices real quick. No, there should be a public hearing.
I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am, there should be a public hearing. Because it is a zoning action. Which is what went out in the property owner notice.
The agenda for tonight.
Allison, where did you find that for reference?
I pulled up the copy of the property owner notice that was sent out, as well as the newspaper notice. And if we look at our technical manual... Sorry, I know I'm off screen for a second. If you look at our technical manual on the notices table, I suspect it will tell us public hearing required. Yes, yeah, so zoning cases, do you have public hearing requirements? So you're saying it wasn't posted on the agenda for a public hearing?
Consider action, unless it is a public hearing now.
Hey, let me reach out to Jennifer really quick to see, I guess, she posted this item for consideration. So let me reach out to her really quick to make sure that there was, that we didn't mess up.
Make sure we get...
Because if it was supposed to be posted for a public hearing, the agenda doesn't read that way, technically can't hear this item.
Correct.
Let me call her really quick.
All right.
Hey. Hey, by the way, if you're not speaking, if we can just make sure to boot the devices so that there's not feedback or whatnot, that way it's not confusing. I'm talking to Jennifer right, two seconds, sorry. Okay, so I spoke with Jennifer and it was supposed to be advertised on the agenda as a public hearing to line up with the public notices that were sent out, as well as the advertisement that was placed up the park. So it does look like we will not be able to hear this item tonight. We are going to re-notice, find its priority, run it in the paper again, and post another agenda that does list it as a public hearing so that we are in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code.
All righty. Sure we crossed the K's and topped the I's?
Absolutely. Thank you for calling that to our attention.
And can you just, and I know you all know what you're doing, but can you just kind of brief us on how that, what, I'm guessing whenever there's a zoning change, we have to do a public hearing? Can someone rehash that?
Yes, so zoning cases require a public hearing, notification in the newspaper, public notices to property owners within 200 feet, and our new development code requires signs posted on site. So we sent out the newspaper notification, we sent out mailed notices to property owners and posted signs, but we did not get the agenda correct. So what should happen is there should be a public hearing at both PMZ and for the first reading at City Council for the ordinance. And that gives citizens opportunity to comment and tell us what they think, express any concerns or any comments they have in favor of the action. And then City Council would adopt or not by ordinance after hearing your recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Would it be appropriate to even go through some of the discussion, even though we don't have a vote, or should we put everything off until...
Since it wasn't posted as a public hearing, we should probably refrain from discussion. But your information is in the packet and there was actually an update from the developer after the Development Review Committee made a recommendation. And so if you read the staff report in your packet, you'll see that there were two options from staff. And so one was a recommendation for denial unless they use the B-3 code cross-sections. And if they did use the B-3 code cross-sections, then it would, staff would recommend approval. And the developer has updated us that they will use the B-3 cross-sections and work with staff on some minor adjustments there. And so we'll get all of that prepared in the next staff report and for the next meeting. That way you see all of those updates as well, and it's not just the presentation that would have been updated.
Okay. Everybody cool with that? Understand what's happening?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, this is Seth Merritt with BGE on behalf of the developer. Can you confirm that your code definitely says that you can't just open a public hearing that has to be posted? Since everybody was notified a couple different ways, since the notifications were correct that were sent out and posted, does it say that the agenda item has, says that it needs to be posted in the agenda? And that we can't just open a public hearing?
You have to be notified of a public hearing. I'm not an expert law, but...
So I think what we're saying is that the notifications that were mailed all did say that it was a public hearing, correct?
Right, but the agenda is also a notification. Take it later.
Does the code say that the agenda has to say that?
The agenda has to reflect what's going to be considered the night of the meeting.
Right, but it says we're going to consider the item in all statements that set a public hearing?
Hey, so I did have this call in and we're going to go ahead and she's going to call Alan, our legal staff, and defer to his expertise to ensure that, you know, don't violate anything in the Texas Local Government Code. So we're reaching out to our attorney right now. We will verify that it does need to be posted or does not need to be posted that way. So just bear with us for a moment.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you. Just looking to see if we can move this along tonight, if at all possible, since most of it was correct. Thank you.
While we're waiting to hear back from our esteemed legal counsel, let's put that on the back burner for the moment, and when you hear from Alan, just let us know. But in the interim, we can just move on to the updates on the City Council's action regarding planning departments. Do we have anything that can be updated?
I don't have anything. Trey Jobe is also on the line. Do you have any updates from City Council?
Other than the fact that we have a new city manager?
That's the only one that's up there.
It's just a little thing there, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Also, Item 4B.
Oh, sorry, listeners. We give a minor update that we are working on rolling out the new program that we're launching called MiGO that is going to be our internal portal. We have been intensively training our staff for the past two weeks regarding what is the collaborator side, which is basically what the customer face side of the program will look like, as well as the module admin side. And that's basically the side that staff will interact with. And I just want to say, this new product that we're going to be rolling out, MiGO, is fabulous. There's so much information going to be available to the public. If you want to put in work orders, they want to report potholes, if they want to even look up an address to see what's going on, if permits have been pulled. A lot of times we get phone calls from the public and they want to know what's going on at a particular residence, you know? And so we actually have a feature now, this is going to be rolled out online, where people will be able to go in and actively look up the address and what permits have or haven't been pulled. So that's going to help us just communicate transparency to the community and this really help with this community engagement aspect. So we're really excited about it. Another great thing is that we will be moving to online permit submissions. So a lot of times right now, there is a little bit of delay when someone wants to do some minor trade work, you know, they have to wait till we receive the application, we process the request, call for payment. It's a little bit of, it's not as sleek as it could be, but with this new system that we're rolling out, people will be able to go in online, apply for the permit, apply for the projects, and then also we'll be able to approve them and they will be able to pay online. So we are so excited about this new system. And hopefully we'll be able to share the link with you all soon so that you can log into it and just, you know, look around it. And then the great thing about this new system that we're rolling out is it's very, very customer-driven. So any feedback that y'all want to give, ways that could be just better for the community, ideas that you have, just we are looking forward to hear everything we can so that we can really have a platform that really engages the community and keeps everyone just very abreast of all the different development and details and CFOs. So I did want to put that out there, we're extremely excited about it.
Great. Sounds good. Sounds good.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Yes, absolutely. And I want everybody to know that, although he's not showing up on here, but our penalty liaison, Lyle Nelson, Mayor Proton, is watching. So he's doing his liaison job.
I have a question.
Item 4... Sure.
As Viviana was talking about that, is the city going to be hiring additional staff for, to handle what could be additional workload for the planning review? We don't want to have a bottleneck, you know? Is there anything, any discussion about that?
I believe that Trey Jobe would be the appropriate person to answer the question.
Hey Pablo, could you just clarify that for me? Are you talking about your concern is the additional amount of planning review to...
I think what we've done is we've kind of up, I would say we've raised the bar when it comes to permit submittals. And I know with the changes they've made in the legislature, you know, giving a shot clock essentially, you know, I was just wondering how that's going to all work out so that we don't have a lot of delays and then just at the last minute, a lot of just approvals. I don't even know what the current volume is, so I'm interested to see if we're thinking that far down the road.
We absolutely are. So not only are we thinking about it, but we have plans to discuss new positions of that nature with Capitol here very soon. So yeah, we're absolutely working on it.
I think one of the things that we're waiting on is the selection of a new city manager. So since it happened Tuesday night, coming on board in August, do you agree, Trey, that we probably see some movement in that regard from the City and Planning Department after that?
I do. I think we'll start searching for a new director and filling the rest of the positions. But what we've done is this will actually streamline, this may actually lighten the workload for the three people that are working right now. So there's a good chance that it's going to, while you may have reduced staff at the moment, it's going to increase your capacity. That's the plan.
And it would be remiss if we didn't thank you, Trey, for all you've done in the interim between the exit of the previous city manager and what you've stepped into the breach to do and your job as always, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
All righty. Has someone else joined us?
Yes, Jennifer here. Sorry, I just got off the phone with Alan and clarified that since we notified properly mail notice and then the paper notice, the agenda language, as long as we're specific about what we're talking about, don't have to specifically say we're holding a public hearing. So we can, as long as we hold a public hearing tonight, that's all that's required out of the Local Government Code.
So I would need to open a public hearing. I would have to open a public hearing, hear from staff, close it, and see if there's any comments and then vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, we can still have that, we can still consider the item and as long as we open and close a public hearing during the item.
Okay. All right. We'll do that then, as soon as we go. We'll go on back, before we leave Item 4, is there anything that anybody on the agenda for next go-round? Maybe one of these days we'll be back in a room together. All right, let's jump back into Item 3B. I have already read the agenda item. The only change is, is this will be a public hearing to consider action and make a recommendation of the amendments. So at this time, open the public hearing, and Ms. Allison, you want to go through what this is all about?
Yes, ma'am. All right, so I'm going to briefly go over, for anyone that is recently joining us, the location off of 304 and Agnes Street. The amendments will not change the unit lot count or the uses, just development standards within the agreement. This is the proposed preliminary plot where you can see we have several blocks created with connectivity through to Agnes and 304. The summary of the changes in this amendment are the creation of an administrative adjustment process for very minor items. They adjusted parking. There were some oddities and some slightly unclear language, especially when you were talking about parking spaces off the alley-loaded products. They reduced the minimum dwelling sizes, adjusted the setback encroachments for alley-loaded corner lots, and the facade and architectural differentiation that was in the original Plan Development District was from the old code, and they have updated that to better incorporate the requirements of the B-3 code and the pattern book. They have very similar language now. And they have removed the sample lot elevations, they were unnecessary, and addressed parking along the streets. So the language was included to be compliant with the International Fire Code that deals with no parking zones. And the, after reviewing all of the amendments, the Development Review Committee recommended using the B-3 code street types and cross-sections that were adopted in the new code and updating this relatively new plan development that doesn't have anything built on the ground yet to be more in compliance with the B-3 code. And, you know, those street cross-sections in the B-3 code are already reviewed for minimum street widths and pavements and parking requirements. And we will work with the developer to adjust with the right-of-way. So our standard right-of-way is 55 feet, but the preliminary plot only calls for 50-foot right-of-ways in the subdivision. And so there's a couple of back-of-curb modifications that we might be able to make, you know, such as adjusting a planting zone width where street trees go, or a sidewalk width here or there to make up those five feet and still have a very walkable environment, which is the goal of the new code. We mail notifications to 14 surrounding property owners and place two signs on the property, one on each street. This is the update since the DRC action that you saw in your packet. The applicant has chosen to use the B-3 code street types. And as I mentioned earlier, we will work together with the applicant to address the back-of-curb modifications for that reduced right-of-way that's established. And like I said, we'll make sure that we get a, you know, a good walking environment that promotes walkability throughout the neighborhood, you know, which is the intent of the cross-sections being used, even though there's a slightly reduced right-of-way width there. So the original DRC recommendation was to recommend denial unless those new street cross-sections were adopted. The applicant has updated it and has stated they are going to use those cross-sections, which amends DRC's recommendation to an approval with conditions. And those conditions are the same ones that you see on the DRC action form in your packet, which was to update one of the items regarding parking on the alley-loaded properties and to remove Figure 1 from Appendix A and update Section 1.7 street widths with the correct B-3 code street type language. All right. And that is all I have for the presentation. The applicant is on the line, as you heard earlier, if you have any questions for them.
Allison, I have a question. So the applicant made the change that you would recommend, you now recommend approval, staff?
Yes, with the update from the applicant stating that they would like to use the B-3 code cross-sections, staff does recommend approval with conditions.
I have a question, please. Allison, on Item 1.5 on the area regulations under D, they've scratched out building separation. One story would be 15 feet, two-story would be 20 feet, and put in separation distance between buildings, so made all fire code requirements. What is that distance, fire code requirements? What is that exactly?
That is dependent on the materials used and if you are within a certain distance of the property line. So, you know, your fire separation is reduced if you're using solid masonry as opposed to wood. And so it allows for different distances between buildings depending on the material. And that language actually is exactly what's in the B-3 code as well. And so it also brought that section into compliance with the B-3 code.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Say that it'll typically be, the building separation could be 10 feet between buildings without, you know, addressing the openings. The closer you get within 10 feet, you have to go with fire glass, or you're limited to a number, a minimum amount of percentage of that wall being open without having some fire glass. So I think that we've kind of relied on the international building code, excuse me, the international residential code in this case to kind of help with that. So I think the building official has, will cover all that. Is that the idea?
Yes. Are there any other questions?
Have we received anything, Madam Secretary, from anyone who wishes to be heard tonight? Anyone from the public?
And Madam Chair?
Seeing that we have no...
I did have one question.
Okay.
I did have one question, sorry, real quick. I did have one question, sorry, real quick. Sorry, I was just trying to look up some information. When you say that we're gonna take five feet out of the right-of-way to go to 50, are we taking it out of the planting area, or we're gonna reduce the sidewalk, or is it gonna be a combination of all of that?
It hasn't been determined yet, but it would probably be a combination of things. We would want to make sure that we don't have any utility conflicts, you know, between the planting area, the streetlights, and any of the underground infrastructure, you know, before we reduce any given option. And of course, the sidewalks will need to remain ADA compliant, no matter what width they end up being.
And my understanding is that the width of that planting area for trees, I guess that was probably checked with some arborist, but I want to say it can't be two feet, I think it's gotta be a little bit more than that. It's not my recollection. Someone's gonna check in on that, right, so we don't have a bunch of dead trees after a few years.
Absolutely.
That's all I had.
Anyone else? I will close the public hearing at this time on item 3B, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a recommendation. We approve based on the staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion to approve. Second, is that Greg?
Yes.
Okay. Will you please call the roll committee?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
No.
Cheryl Lee?
Yeah.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Just one more, not an update, but, um... Excuse me. Ed Scornulus has had to resign, so we do have a, if anyone knows of a, someone that would be interested in helping us move our Planning and Zoning Commission forward, please have them get in touch with our, with the mayor or the secretary or come and join us. Appreciate it. So with that being said, no one has anything, any individual requests for, for next time? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I make a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Second, Greg? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So who's taking the next? The impact. Trey, is that you?
So this one, we will start the meeting and then we're going to hand it over to our consultant to go through their presentation.
Okay. And I wanted to say too that Dawn Kena, she's not off here often, but say hello to Dawn and welcome. She's our impact fee person.
Hey Dawn. Hello Dawn.
Please introduce yourself, sir.
All right, and let me know whenever you're ready for me to call roll, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Please do that right now.
Debbie Moore?
Get me straight. Present.
Cynthia Meyer? Here. Matt Lassen?
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Ishmael Harris?
Here.
Pablo Serna?
Here.
Dawn Kena?
Here.
All right, are you ready for me to take it away?
Just about. Do we have any citizen comments?
Not at this time, ma'am.
All right, excellent.
Thank you for that, ma'am.
No worries.
I didn't have a, an agenda specifically for impact fees, I just didn't see it. So, we had, we had discussed and considered action to submit comments to the City Council on the update amendment to the Bastard Code of Ordinance, Chapter 13, Article 3.12, entitled Impact Fees, Updating the Land Use Assumptions, Capital Improvement Plan, and Amending Impact Fees for Water and Wastewater Utilities, and Move to Include on the July 28, 2020 City Council Agenda.
All right, now Chris, I'm going to make you presenter.
Everybody bear with the technical side here. All right, as soon as I can get this here, hang on just a second. All right, can everybody see the presentation now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I can see it.
See, it's actually gonna go over into presentation mode. All right, very good. Well again, my name is Chris Eckrude, I'm with NewGen Strategies and Solutions. We serve as the city's water and wastewater impact fee consultant. Some of you may recall from last year when we went through pretty much this same presentation. Our job tonight is to look at the city's impact fees on the water and wastewater side, see how they're performing, and determine if any changes are needed as City Council goes forward to consider this at their next meeting. As the process goes, you are responsible for providing comments to the City Council. Ultimately, the City Council would take action on the water and wastewater impact fees. So it's just a little background, impact fees, what are they? Impact fees are governed by Chapter 395 of the Local Government Code. There's a very strict statutory guideline that governs impact fees, how we calculate them, how we use them, how we account for them. So we have to make sure that we are following the statutory guidelines. Impact fees are a revenue mechanism that the city can use to generate revenue that can be used for infrastructure costs associated with new development. The idea is that growth pays for growth. That's the concept with impact fees. You'll see as we go through the presentation, there are some credits that have to be recognized in the process, so it's not 100%. You can't put 100% of the cost on new development, so we have to make sure that we calculate that properly. But again, this is meant to be a mechanism to help growth pay for growth. So under 395, there are certain things we can and cannot include in the impact fee calculation. What you see on the screen right now are the recoverable costs. So construction of new infrastructure, there's surveying or engineering cost associated with new infrastructure, land acquisition, there's also financing costs. So these are big projects that we're talking about. As we undertake those big projects, typically we use debt to fund them, so the financing cost of those projects can be included. Also, the cost of outside advisors, our costs can be rolled into the fee as well. What cannot be covered by impact fees? If there is a project that is not in the Capital Improvement Impact Fee, CIP, it cannot be included in impact fees. So this is only growth-related projects. We cannot use impact fees to cover the city's O&amp;M cost. If there are existing deficiencies in infrastructure, for example, if we have a pumping deficiency, we need more pumping capacity because of our existing connections, we can't recover that cost in impact fees. If there's any kind of financing cost for projects that are not impact fee related, we cannot get those as well. So again, we have to be very careful about what we do and do not include within the impact fee calculations. There are several steps to how we calculate impact fees. We start with population projections, we then look at the capital improvements plan, this is ultimately determining what are growth-related projects. I do want to point out to you, we are only looking at the next 10 years when we're looking at impact fees. We have a limited window. We can't look 30, 40, 50 years in the future, we can only look at usage in the next 10 years of that infrastructure. So I talked earlier about the revenue side. So again, financing costs, if we issue debt, we can include that in impact fees, but we have to provide a credit back to new development. When new development comes in, it'll be paying water and wastewater rates, it'll also be paying ante lorem taxes. We have to recognize that within our calculations so that we don't double-recover revenue from new growth. So we do the credit calculation, or we simply cut the fee in half. And you're gonna see, our recommendation is to come in and cut the fee in half, that's how we've done our calculations. But the thing to note there is because we're not recovering the full cost of new development, the cost that is not recovered has to be built into the city's water and wastewater rates. So all customers, we contribute to that cost. Again, as we look at this tonight, what we're here to present is the maximum assessable impact fee. I point that out because as you see these fees, in some cases, they are significant. It is a significant cost for new growth. You as the advisory committee and the council as the body that adopts the fee may choose to adopt a lower fee. You say, you can't, you cannot adopt a fee above what we, what we're presenting tonight. This is the maximum assessable fee. So with that said, the key assumptions that we've used in this year's update, we're utilizing a 3% growth factor based on conversations with staff. That produces approximately 2,100 new water connections over the next 10 years, 1,921 new wastewater connections. We have 33 water projects that are in some way eligible for impact fee recovery, and 22 wastewater CIP projects. As we look at the water impact fee, we're gonna start with water, then we'll move to wastewater. You see there are approximately $60.27 million in infrastructure projects that are needed for water. However, you'll recall I said earlier, we are only looking at the next 10 years. But as we look at those projects, we have to determine what percentage of those projects will be utilized in the next 10-year period. That's the middle column there where you see the 2020, 2030 growth, that is the percentage that based on engineering estimates is anticipated to be used by the development in the next 10 years. So while we have $60.2 million in infrastructure needs, we can only recover $15.57 million in total cost in impact fees. So again, we need 60, but only $15.57 is eligible for the calculation at this time. So the calculation, we've put this on the screen so you can see the calculation last year as compared with this year. On the right-hand side under 2020, let me point you to line eight. What we're recommending for adoption this year as the water impact fee is a fee per development, fee per house, excuse me, fee per house of $4,109. That compares with last year's recommendation. We recommended to this body and to the council a fee of $1,785. So it's a fairly significant increase year over year, $1,785 going to $4,109. That's a $2,300 increase in the impact fee. What is driving that? As you look up at line one, it's really driven by our project cost. Our project costs have gone up substantially year over year. Some of these, I believe in prior years were estimates, now they've been bid out, and also in the construction costs are simply rising. So you can see, we went from $7.8 million in cost up to $15.5. As our cost rises, our financing cost also goes up because we have to borrow more money. At the same time, as we generate more money, then there's also the fact that we would have more interest-related costs, and our existing fund, our existing fund balance on the water side has also gone down slightly. Can everybody still see the screen? It's kind of changed on my end.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. I apologize, I had a little bobby layer. So again, just to recap, we are recommending a water impact fee this year, $4,109, that's an increase of $2,324. That's mainly being driven by the project-related cost. Moving on to the wastewater side, you see on the screen right now the wastewater projects. Again, our total project need on the wastewater side is $42.8 million. However, recognizing the 10-year period that we're looking at here, we reduced the $42.8 down to $20.5 million. Only $20.5 million is impact fee eligible over that 10-year period. So same setup as we had on water, we now look at wastewater. So wastewater, our recommendation of the council and the recommendation that they adopted was a wastewater impact fee of $5,020. We're recommending an increase in the wastewater impact fee to $6,173. That's an increase year over year of $1,153. While not as significant as water, we have seen increases in our overall cost. You can see that, you can see that there really having to do more with financing costs than anything else. Our financing cost has gone up, our interest earnings have gone up, our fund balance has gone down, but also we've seen a reduction in the growth projection year over year. So when you think about a rate, dollars divided by units, our dollars have changed slightly, but we've seen a bigger change in our denominator, our estimated growth over the next 10 years. So that's what's driving that wastewater change year over year. So our recommendation again for you and for the council is this year to adopt a water impact fee of $4,109, a wastewater impact fee of $6,173. Currently under your ordinance, you escalate the impact fee based on the size of the connection of the new development. We're recommending you continue that practice, that is a standard practice as recommended by the American Water Works Association. The last slide I'd like to show you this evening is a comparison, but as I show you this comparison, let me remind you that every city is different. This is not an apples-to-apples comparison. Every city funds infrastructure differently, they maintain infrastructure differently, every city is experiencing growth differently. And so as you look at this, again, last year, or under the current, excuse me, under the current fees, a new development ambassador for a single-family home, 3/4-inch connection would pay $6,805 in impact fees. Our recommendation is to take that to $10,282. While that puts you at the top of this particular ranking right now, other cities are going through the same process where they consider impact fees and update impact fees. That happens all the time. So in one month, two months, six months from now, this could look very different as we come back and revisit this. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Chris, I just have a question. Even though the numbers look quite a bit larger that we're proposing, we're still just factoring this on a 3% growth factor, correct?
That's correct. This is a 3%, this is a 3% growth factor.
So that's pretty, I mean, I'm just thinking that's kind of a... So that's pretty, I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking that's kind of a, a low percentage growth factor, so they don't really look that big than when you consider the growth factors I would think would be low for our area.
We, we have tried not to overstate any of our assumptions here, so if anything, it's my opinion that the fees are conservative and that we're not overcharging. But again, our assumptions are certainly subject to review should you or the council feel that we are off-base in, in any way.
Thank you.
Last year, I talked about, when we were talking about these fees, I brought up the fact of our rural development, trying to compare the rates that we pay for aqua-water and septic. Because in a way, it's the same, you know, you're getting the same service, and actually homeowners prefer city services over septic anyway. So right now, to get an aqua-water meter, it's $4,500 for the meter. If you have to take your line any further than, I think it's 30 feet, it's $8 a foot for them to run it. So you're looking at $4,500 just for the meter, and then you have to pay if it's very far to your property. And then for septics, the lowest I've found lately for a client was $7,800. They're ranging $8,800 to $9,000, and those are drain fields and also aerobic. So either way, these cost are less than water and a septic for, like pine forest or some parts of Teton that don't have sewer service like the city. So that's my input from the real estate side.
I have a question. I have a question real quick. On residential sprinklers, how is that? Is that a separate tap or can they get a larger line and then branch it off?
Can somebody with the city address that as to whether you require the impact fee be paid? I believe it is per meter, but that's subject to check with the city.
Yeah, I can address that. There is an impact fee for the water. You've got a separate irrigation meter, there's obviously no impact fee for the sewer. But you do, you can do either one. You can have one larger meter and separate off your sprinkler if you like, and we make adjustments there. But, but yes, anytime you have another water tap, three-quarter inch, you still have to pay the impact fee.
If you wanted to put a residential sprinkler, say you're close to the forest there, or forests that caught on fire in 2011, and you want to retrofit your house with a sprinkler, you can just upsize your meter, you don't have to put a new tap?
That's right. You would not need a new tap. You, you would, you made the difference in, if you, you may not need a new tap. Let me rephrase that. I don't know what your water demand is. Without knowing what your water demand is, it'd be pretty hard for me to tell you the size that you need. But if you're just generally splitting off a three-quarter-inch meter, that's acceptable. Obviously, you don't change the-
If you do have a, a new tap, every new tap is going to be at this fee, whether you want a sprinkler on it or a whole house, correct?
That's correct, because you can't get any more water out of a three-quarter-inch line than the three-quarter-inch line allowed.
I guess question for Chris is, in other communities that are close to forests, I guess, thinking about what we have, what happened with our fire, if we, as a, as a city start to require sprinklers potentially out there as, as a safe measure, are you seeing that in other communities or are they just letting it, people do as a, you know, as they, as they choose?
I, I can't speak to another community that is exactly the same, that is in a position similar to that, but if you are starting to require that, if you're putting a requirement in place, that then drives infrastructure, that also drives the number of connections. So anytime you have an ordinance change like that, it would be reflected in the calculation. I, I don't know that I have a good example of anybody out there that is or is not doing that. That really becomes more of a public policy decision for the specific community.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that irrigation systems are a way to manage, you know, fire suppression, but we definitely in our subdivisions standards require that there's fire hydrants and fire flow, and that's kind of how we get our fire protection. I do agree it's a good idea, and you're right, a lot of places that did not flood down, made sure their pine needles were ranked up, and they watered their yard every day. But, um-
I'm aware of, I'm aware of Lakeway. Did a, did some development out in Lakeway, and they require it for their subdivisions because of the fires that they've had out there. So I'm just aware of a few communities, but I mean, and that's down the road for us, but I was wondering how that was handled with our impact. Was it just teed off of it or was it required to be a separate tap? Because if I were doing it, I would just make it a larger tap, you know, inch, inch and a half, and then it would just be one fee instead of having two separate taps.
Yeah. Again, as Trey said, though, you've, you've got plumbing issues there. Can you meet the demand that, that you're going to have at the time you need it? So there, there are some, there's, there's, there's the plumbing side of that that I'm not qualified to speak to.
Yeah. You don't, you don't, if you, if you come in and you need an inch and a half tap, you can have, you'll have to look for that impact for the inch and a half, if that makes any sense. If that's the multiplier that Chris was talking about earlier.
I got you. So most, this is based on three-quarter-inch tap, but if we needed to, if, how does it, is it just factored out for a one inch?
Everything is factored out from three-quarter-inch, so it's based on the demand that the meter can place, and so it's using what's called meter equivalency factors that the AWWA publishes. Unfortunately, I don't have last year's ordinance in front of me right now, but it's all, it's all laid out in the ordinance as to what those factors are.
All right. Thank you.
No more questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. There's a second?
Second.
No second? Dawn Kena?
Form.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Did you call me? Cut out. If you call me, yeah.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Greg Carey?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
Yep.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion. Recommend to the council that it be approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thanks, Chris.
Any other business on agenda for today? Allison, Viviana?
No. No, ma'am.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
If you want to stay here, go right ahead. Turn off my, my machine. Turn off the show and hopefully we'll be able to explain with each other. Y'all take care. Bye.